Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, December fifteenth, and this is a Prescott City Council study session, uh, virtually. Uh, let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilwoman Orr is excused from the meeting.
Okay, very good. Well, I think we, uh, know how to do this, uh, based on what we did last week with our study session, and we have two items here, uh, today. So, uh, let's go to item three A, please.
Presentation and discussion on water main materials.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Craig Dobson and Eric Bay Public Works. And, uh, Mayor, I believe we, hopefully, we're gonna be a little smoother this time. Uh, I believe you can all see our, the beginning of our presentation?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, okay?
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay. So, we are here to talk this afternoon, requested by, uh, some of council members, for us to do, uh, a review and discussion on water main materials. That's what we're, uh, we're here for today. Um, and some of the things that we will go over in this presentation are our current standards, where we're at, uh, today, what our standards are, uh, current evaluation, how the materials are performing for us, and then, uh, ultimately, as far as potential changes, are, are changes needed to what we currently have in our standards?
And I'm gonna kick us off with, uh, where we're at today. Um, this is our current standard in the G E S, uh, four point seven point two. And as you can see, our preferred material within the city is ductile iron pipe. And this was set by city staff on recommendation back in twenty sixteen. Point two under the pipe materials here is that an alternate material PVC is still allowed within the city of Prescott, uh, when installed in accordance with C O P standard detail two hundred P dash two. And to give you an idea of what that looks like, we have that here on this next slide. And it's a busy detail, there's a lot to it. We, uh, we highlight the steps that are required to successfully install PVC here. And I don't expect you to read this slide, but, uh, kind of a summary of the highlights of this slide can be seen on the next slide here. Uh, we do allow PVC, um, first and foremost, but we do specify C nine hundred D R fourteen as the allowable PVC pipe. Uh, D R fourteen, that's a dimension ratio, that has to do with the thickness, um, of the PVC pipe itself. Uh, all PVC pipe, as mentioned on the previous detail, needs to be inspected, uh, above the trench before it's placed in there. And then during installation, uh, we are requiring one hundred percent inspection, uh, to ensure that the trench is par- prepared correctly, we've got a good foundation, the bedding, the backfill material is up to specification, uh, the pipe is installed and inserted correctly, uh, as well as the tracer wire placement, the compaction, the detector tape, uh, and many other metrics. So, um, moving forward, uh, we'll, uh, kinda highlight the history of what we've experienced with PVC.
So, this is a table that we've put together, um, with projects where we have done, uh, spot repairs, we've done so full replacements, and/or had significant pavement damages and, uh, and replacements associated with it. So, our, our first kind of bad, uh, history, uh, with PVC was on Country Park, uh, road west of Willow Creek Road. So, it was originally installed in nineteen eighty-five, and the majority of it was replaced in nineteen ninety-five, with the exception of the last small section, which is on the next line, which extended up and connected into Willow Creek Road. Um, at that time, um, at that point in time, Willow Creek Road was two lanes, narrow, curvy, very busy road going up the hill. So, when it was, when the majority of it was replaced, uh, someone decided that, uh, that they weren't gonna do the last little bit, and then that turned around and kind of, uh, haunted us there then in nineteen ninety-seven, just a couple of years later. And we actually had a, uh, a private vehicle that, uh, that fell into the sinkhole that was caused by that failure. One thing that, that we definitely see the difference between PVC, um, and ductile iron is when we have a failure, it's a catastrophic failure. It, it explodes, it has, it blows the road completely out, pavement, we end up with such a large volume of water that then many times it's been trapped underneath the pavement and follows the pavement and, and takes and removes all the, uh, A B C, uh, base out from underneath the pavement, which then causes significant damage. And we've had, uh, some of the projects on this list are directly from that. Uh, Laurel Lane, again, was a project, it was only ten years old, had to be, uh, replaced from Rossar going north up towards the Cedarwood Tanks. Um, on that one, when one of the spot repairs was being performed, uh, water staff actually was, was digging the pipe up, and while they were, uh, working on that, the pipe actually exploded on them and injured two employees with that one back in nineteen ninety-six. Bullwhacker Hill, um, project, we didn't have to ultimately replace it because the Gateway Mall, uh, abandoned it, going down across that country and built, built new system. Uh, Lusay Drive, this, this instance right here was just a spot repair on, uh, on Super Bowl Sunday of that year. And so, we've done one spot repair where it was laying on a rock, but ultimately, that failure caused us to spend a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars on pavement replacement of that road. And throughout that entire length, then since that time, we have not had another failure. So, that's kind of part of the challenges with this as well, too. When we get one failure like this, or two, we're, we're in that balancing act of, okay, do we need to do a project and replace the whole entire thing, or is this a isolated incident? And like on Lusay, this one, to date, appears to have been an isolated incident at that location. Um, and so, this, this is all we've had, and we did not, have not gone in there and done a full replacement to that expense. Willow Creek Road, um, that, that pipe actually was only four years old. It was actually out of warranty when it blew up. This was, uh, Willow Creek Road just north of Rossar. Uh, when it blew up, it actually was out of warranty, but being done, it was so close to the time of construction that the contractor did come back in and warranty that and, and fix that for the city. Hacienda Development, we've had, um, a number of spot repairs in there online. Now, Cliff Rose, it has the most extensive history here with a number of projects, and anywhere from replacing stuff that was eleven years old to the project that we, um, just barely completed here in the last couple of months. So, and different, uh, uh, extensive or the extent of the damage was different on these. Several of them were a spot repair and then extensive pavement replacement fix from it. But then ultimately, we have replaced everything from State Route eighty-nine all the way up to like the adult center. And, uh, the project we just did was on Boardwalk.
Marvin Gardens.
Uh, Marvin Gardens in, in that area. But these are all other projects or other incidences that have happened associated with Cliff Rose, uh, system, uh, separate from the one that we, uh, just contracted for. And then Carrillo Lane, uh, out by Costco, we've had some spot repairs in there as well. So, from this list, um, we have a total of eleven thousand four hundred feet that's been replaced, um, plus all the spot repairs, uh, to the tune of about one point four three four million dollars. Um, we have, uh, number, a comment down here, so ninety thousand dollars in investment, um, essentially could potentially have been offset of the one point four three four million, um, in, in the realm of the cost of eight inch C nine hundred today versus eight inch ductile iron today. It'd be ninety thousand dollars more to purchase this eleven thousand four hundred feet of pipe, and it has cost the city one point four three four plus all these internal repairs, um, in, in this situation of this history table. Uh, this was a failure on Lusay, separate from the one on Super Bowl Sunday. This is right down near Costco. Um, some of what happens, like I said, it's catastrophic. When it comes out, we're talking large volumes of water and many times significant damage to city as well as private property. This section in here was replaced with, uh, Walker Road improvements that was, uh, completed a, a couple of years ago. This one on, uh, Circle P, then this has just been a, a spot repair that's been done to date, and time will tell us whether this is a, a isolated incident or there will be, you know, more there.
And, uh, coupled with, uh, Craig's wonderful historic, uh, knowledge, in twenty eighteen, he was able to pass that baton off to me, and then I was able to continue, um, you know, with my own personal experience with PVC, since I have been here in, in my position for just a couple of years now, uh, with one of the bigger ones being Skyline Drive in June of twenty nineteen, which, as Craig mentioned, when PVC fails, it has a tendency to fail on the catastrophic side. The most telling, uh, this photo that you can see is the crack in that pipe runs the full distance of that pipe. Uh, so, when performing a repair like that, it's not something where the water goes down and we're able to get the water back on within a few hours. We needed to excavate a full length of pipe to perform that repair. Um, and even a little bit farther than that, as the bell was, was chopped out on both sides. In addition to that, this happens to be a, um, a situation where the contractor bent and stressed the pipe over, uh, rock bedding. So, once we installed, once we removed the old PVC, we had to further excavate rock, um, in the middle of the night. And I remember my guys performing this about one in the morning, just so that we could fit the new pipe properly in there and restore water service.
We had to jackhammer it out, didn't they?
We did. And then, um...
I have a question, fellas.
Yes.
When, when we're doing replacement of these different areas, are we replacing with ductile, or are we going back with PVC?
We always replace with ductile one hundred percent of the time.
So, ductile is interchangeable with PVC, once it's in the ground?
We're able to utilize couplings that will match the different materials together, yes.
Okay. And I, and I think that your comment is a fair comment to make that, uh, and Craig will know that I've been around for a while. I think the catastrophic failures that we have had have been because of poor installation in the PVC and lack of shading material, in the case of Rossar and Willow Creek Road. And by the way, I have to give Fan Construction credit for coming back and fixing that on his dime. But we know the earth moves, uh, and when the earth moves and vehicles rattle across it, and those pipes are sitting on unshaded material, this is what we're gonna get, is what we're seeing in the picture.
Correct. Um, in addition to the earth moving, uh, Councilman Blair, uh, when we do experience a failure, uh, de-energizing the system and then re-energizing it, um, along with the extreme volumes and velocities that are generated by a break, the pipes, uh, will move because of that scenario. Uh, one month after the Skyline failure, uh, this failure, and this picture occurred on Golf Club Lane, which is just downstream of the previous failure. And, uh, I always like to say that water main failures tend to, uh, occur in pairs or triplets, because when you turn the system, when you change the system, when you, when you make those velocity changes and move that pipe, you have the ability to dislodge, put rocks against there, create new pressure points, and potential new spots of failure. This pipe right here, um, on Golf Club Lane, when it failed, it was in the tune of twenty years old, uh, well before its, uh, its service life should have been. And we've seen it all throughout the years, too. Um, PVC can, can fail and has failed, um, in several different ways. There's point loading, which is probably the most, uh, discussed. Uh, overbelling is another big issue. Uh, the Golf Club Lane one, that pipe was also overbelled, and I think that contributed a little bit to the longitudinal cracking that you saw. Joint deflection, uh, if you overstress the joints, that can create forces in the pipe that it's not supposed to have and create also cracking. Uh, longitudinal bending is sometimes, um, referred to in Unibel, uh, which is the, uh, the PVC Association, as acceptable, but within very, very tight tolerances. Um, and we've seen, uh, pipe fail due to longitudinal bending. A cyclical fatigue is a, uh, more of a complex analysis to perform, but, uh, in a city like Prescott, with an enormous amount of P R Vs, booster stations, and topography, cyclical fatigue is something that an engineer needs to consider during design. And then splitting at tap locations, uh, there's a lot of specific literature that, uh, prohibit, uh, putting taps too close together on PVC, because, uh, the taps in a pipe can contribute to cracking along the pipe from, from one tap location to another. Uh, so, there's, there's, there's quite a few different ways PVC can fail.
And maybe to add in a little more, on the cyclical fatigue, when PVC pipe is designed, they put it through tests at the factory, and the cyclical fatigue is part of that. And that's every time that that pipe expands or contracts, that's, that's a movement. And they design in, whether it's one million movements or something like that, is what the pipe has in its life expectancy. So, then, if we have more of those movements because of, of a more challenging system, then it ultimately can reduce that life expectancy, even under normal conditions, perfectly installed, just the pipe itself can only move so many cycles before it's going to start to fail.
That's correct.
So, we, uh, said where, where are we at today? So, we have our G E Ss in place. So, by those, here's, here's a list of projects, um, since the G E Ss were adopted. So, there have been, um, on the private development projects, now, uh, of the P I PVC list here, these are either complete, they're under construction, or there's a few that have been in review and just haven't started construction yet. But of that, there's been thirty projects that have been approved for PVC, um, and totaling eighty-three thousand feet, uh, since the inception of the G E Ss. On the D I P side, there's been forty-four projects totaling seventy-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-three feet. And of those, twenty-two projects were installed per the G E S. There was no request, no question from, uh, the project holder or the design team. Um, they never submitted any type of request for PVC. And there's also been twenty-two where there was projects, um, that were installed that were denied in alteration modification. So, they did request it, but, um, it, it was denied because of, um, rock materials, depending what part of town it's in, what the pressure is operating in our system at that location, items like that. So, then, there has been twenty-two that have been denied.
And then, moving on to today, uh, we've got a good feel for the historic replacement project. There are two, um, replacement projects that are on the top of everybody's mind that are right here in the recent history. Um, that would be the Cliff Rose Water Line Replacement Project and the Equestrian Way, uh, Water Line Replacement Project. Uh, Cliff Rose having wrapped up a few months ago, and Equestrian Ra- uh, Way wrapping up here very soon. I believe they are going to start testing the, uh, the newly installed water main this week. But between these two projects, design, construction, uh, in Cliff Rose, the pavement replacement was a separate project. We got about one point eight million tied up in replacing the water line there up in Cliff Rose. And the emergency design contract with the, the accelerated construction contract and pavement replacement on Equestrian Way is running us to the tune of six hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, so, if we combine those, just the two recent PVC replacement projects have a hard cost to the city of about two point five million. And I say hard cost because there's additional costs which are just nearly impossible to track. That's, uh, operations staff time, that's my guys, um, you know, doing potholing support, repairs, uh, leading up to the replacement project. Um, there's administration time cost, that would be myself, and, uh, other individuals I work with on the engineering side, the admin side, just to put a project together to, uh, to work with the consultant to review it, um, and to make sure that it, it runs smoothly out in there, answering the many, many contractor questions that come in during the project. Uh, in, uh, many cases, there's a lot of legal department staff time that goes along with, uh, these cases. Um, I can't get into that too specifically at this point, um, but, uh, there's water loss. And candidly, there's, there's other loss as well. Um, I think the biggest one to mention is, uh, is missed opportunities. There were other aged water line projects that we were working on that we had to put on hold, uh, to get these PVC replacement projects complete. And so, we kinda know where we're at from a technical standpoint, but we wanted to know, okay, what is this gonna be from, from a cost standpoint? For all the cost that we incur, for the time we have to put into replacing PVC, to the headache and the missed opportunities, what exactly is this cost difference? Uh, so, we went to a local supplier here in Prescott, and we said, hey, quote us, um, eight inch D R fourteen, what we spec, and quote us eight inch, uh, D I P P C three fifty, which is also, um, pressure class three fifty is the only thing you can get, uh, for eight inch D I P. And we found that right now, the material cost difference is seven dollars and eighty-seven cents per linear foot. So, we're like, okay, how do we compare that to new development? Capital projects are not a concern because the city has already recognized the benefits of D I P. So, we, we came up with some numbers with an, an average lot frontage of, uh, fifty feet, which we believe is a little bit heavy considering some of the very, very small lots that are, are going in, uh, nowadays. We applied the seven dollars and eighty-seven, um, cents per foot, um, across a, uh, street that had dual frontage. And we're finding that it's about two hundred dollars a lot, uh, material difference to install D I P versus PVC. And that will give us all the extra benefits. Um, the benefits of installing PVC or, or D I P are ample.
And with, um, with the quote that was, uh, received there, we, we asked for a quote for a thousand feet of pipe. So, we were not just talking about going and buying one twenty-foot segment, um, that would have a higher cost than a project that was putting in a larger volume. And, and also then, in, in regards to that, that comparison, um, over time, as we've talked about PVC versus ductile iron, um, we, we have it represented that ductile iron costs more to put it in. It's, it's so much more to put it in. There's, there's increased costs on, on either side. So, it's been represented that ductile iron costs more to put it in because of additional labor. On the PVC side, there's gonna be additional costs associated with it, requires additional, uh, joint restraints, because PVC has to have a longer length of pipe restraint for every connection versus ductile iron, as well as PVC requires one hundred percent inspection. So, there's significantly amount more inspection time and inspection cost towards PVC. So, there's, there's other, um, you know, additional cost from either material, but this, this is the, the basic just pipe material cost there. But definitely, there's, there's the ability for them to, uh, to be fairly close in a balance. And this cost is for eight inch, um, historically, six inch and eight inch PVC will just about always... Twelve inch, it gets closer because it takes far more resin to produce the PVC, and PVC is a direct relationship to oil cost. The resin is made from oil, so then there, there is that fluctuation on that side. So, then, when you start getting into twelve and larger PVC, then the, the cost goes the other direction, where PVC can be more than ductile iron. But eight inch is a standard pipe size that's used in our subdivisions and that all over. So, we thought that was, uh, appropriate size to look at.
And just to kinda summarize some of the benefits we're looking at here, um, of D I P over PVC, uh, right off the bat, we're getting a higher pressure rating, which is very important, uh, in a city like ours with a lot of topography. Uh, three fifty is, is the eight inch, uh, pressure class for D I P. The highest you can get for PVC is three hundred and five. Um, there's, there's nine times higher tensile strength with, uh, D I P. Uh, metal is, it's just a superior product. The lifecycle cost reflects that. Um, D I P will and does last longer than PVC. Um, the, the crushing strength, the handling of the, the material, there's an eight times higher crushing strength that, uh, the D I P has. The overbelling concerns that we mentioned earlier, uh, go away. Uh, you can insert a D I P pipe too far, it's called bottoming out, and it does not negatively affect the pipe at all. Uh, the tap spacing concerns are eliminated with D I P. Um, you, you really can't tap it too close. Um, I think that, uh, even Dipra has, has gone as far as putting some thirty-two or sixty-four taps on a single piece of D I P pipe. There's a greater I D, um, which translates into real dollar savings, uh, when we're, when we're pumping water, uh, because the flow characteristics have, uh, less head on them. Uh, there's, uh, greater deflection at pipe joints, so it's actually a better installation. And I do know some contractors have elected to install D I P because they've had, uh, very, um, unwieldy terrain, and they knew they had to make a lot of bends and twists. And you just, you can't do that with installing PVC pipe. And then, of course, uh, employee safety, Craig touched on this a little bit. We did have an incident several years back where we had a couple of employees harmed, um, due to the, the fracturing nature of PVC pipe.
So, the, the conversation of PVC and ductile iron is not new to Arizona by any means. Uh, this, this is a list of direct municipalities that have their own water systems that do not allow PVC, as well as the Arizona Water Company serves eighteen communities within the state of Arizona. And here's a number of them from, um, their, uh, list, where they only, every one of these communities on here, the water systems only allow ductile iron. Arizona Water Company does have one community, Coolidge, that they do allow PVC in, because there's extremely hot soils and, uh, corrosion of ductile iron is an issue down there in Coolidge area. So, they do allow PVC there. But the rest of these communities all only accept ductile iron in their water systems. So, kind of, um, summary on, uh, on our side, uh, the city currently allows PVC, um, as an alt mod to the preferred water main material of D I P. Uh, PVC has changed the focus of our, our city's water replacement program. We, we had a program that was focusing on age and condition, and we've had to move away from that to be primarily on condition, because we are replacing these systems, these, you know, prematurely, for water systems that are, uh, sold, represented, that they're going to be a seventy-five-year product, and we're, we've had to replace them anywhere from now ten years to thirty-four years of age. We're replacing those, and we are leaving the seventy, eighty, ninety-year-old materials in the system. So, that has definitely changed our, our program there. Uh, allowing PVC has created a financial burden to city water funds over the years with, uh, some of these replacement projects and/or damage associated with projects. Uh, D I P water main is common throughout Arizona, is not cost prohibitive to development, and D I P provides many benefits beyond... DIP provides many benefits beyond lifecycle cost, including employee safety. With that, we would be happy to answer any questions that, that you all have, Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you, Craig and Eric. Great, great presentation, very helpful and well put together. Appreciate it. Let's start with Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eric and Craig. I think you made overwhelmingly strong case for eliminating PVC in water mains. There's no question that the city has had to spend exorbitant amounts of money to deal with these unexpected failures. I think we can anticipate more failures of this nature. And it's not, it's, it's a burden on the entire citizens of the city to have to step up and make these repairs. It's dangerous, it's becoming more frequent, and I think it's very clear that PVC is just an inappropriate material for the type of topography and the nature of, of the city. It's just, it's just overwhelmingly clear. I had one constituent that sent me a letter saying that he was a, a city engineer in a, in a beach city in California and how effective PVC was there. Well, I'm sure it was nice sandy loam, but that's, we're an entirely different location. The underground topography, the rocks and everything else, even if you assume that everything is done absolutely correctly, where PVC is properly trenched and supported and, and connected and everything else, it still doesn't, it doesn't add up relative to ductile iron. So I think there's no question we should adopt this as a mandatory water main material.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Public Works for doing this study session. This is a topic that definitely needs to be addressed. It seems like there's been an acceleration of water main breaks the last couple of years. One thing Craig didn't touch upon is when these mains break, that homes are flooded. One house in Cliff Rose had approximately 250,000 gallons coursing through the home and it completely destroyed the home and resulted in a lawsuit and a lot of stress to the homeowner. And then I know of another home that was also flooded due to a, a break out in the street. It was on the downslope. And so when the mains break, it not only causes property damage to the citizens, but people in the neighborhoods, you have hundreds of people who have to have their water shut off. They can't flush their toilets. I'm speaking from personal experience because I've had it happen several times recently. You can't flush your toilet. There's nothing, you have to go buy bottled water and it can go on for days. And we're talking hundreds of people that have to have their water shut off. If you look at this PVC pipe, it was supposed to last 20 or 30 years even under the best conditions. So if we have a material ductile iron pipe that'll last at least 90 years, we should be using that rather than using an inferior product that's going to cost taxpayers to replace it two or three times more frequently. So I believe that we need to require infrastructure that is the best and most cost-effective. If we use ductile iron pipe on our city streets and our city projects, I think we need to be consistent and require everyone that, all the developments that receive city water should be installing this ductile iron pipe because in the end, it's the taxpayers that are going to bear the burden and we owe the taxpayers our responsibility to them and do what's best for the community. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Scholl.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you, Craig and Eric. That was very informational. I guess, you know, I'm definitely comfortable moving in this direction if that's, if that's what we feel is best. And clearly there have been some problems with PVC. I'm wondering if you guys have any inclination about what the response will be from the construction industry about this change?
Our inclination is going to be that they're going to be concerned and/or represent that there's going to be additional costs associated with that for, for their projects.
Okay.
That would be the development industry too. I, I think Councilwoman Scholl, the contractors that do install ductile iron on city capital projects do appreciate working with the ductile iron pipe, at least from what I've heard from, from various project managers and superintendents.
Okay. Well, that's, that's helpful and I'm glad to see that, you know, there's other communities in Arizona that are also only allowing ductile iron pipe. That's, that's encouraging that we're not doing something outside of what's, you know, the norm, what is acceptable.
All right. Councilwoman Sishka.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. Hey, guys, thanks a lot for kind of pointing out the unfortunate, no unfortunate deficits of PVC. My question is, with, with impact fees, do any impact fees cover the possibility of these water main breaks?
The only way that our, our impact fees would be covering it is if we're doing a replacement project for upsizing of, to the system because of, of capacity. And then if, if that project happened to replace a PVC system before it, you know, had, had an issue, that's the only place that impact fees would come into play.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, it seems as though back in maybe 2016, we had these same questions being asked and, and the industry came out in full force with a representative from the PVC industry and basically said we were discriminating against them and we, I'm not sure what the other arguments were, but, you know, at that time, I remember you guys kind of saying, all right, we'll give you one more chance. And it, it certainly has not borne out well. So what are you going to say this time to the industry when they come whining that this is, you know, this is just discriminatory and, you know, we shouldn't be doing this?
Well, I guess one thing in regards to costs, if, if they come forward and, and want to represent, you know, the differential in cost, then we have to look at the big picture of, of every cost associated with installation and have a, a true comparison. And, and then look at life, lifecycle costs and what is, how long can we as a city survive prematurely replacing entire water systems?
Yeah.
While we're not able to do the old stuff.
Okay. So, you know, it's kind of like these, one of these, you know, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. And I think that that's pretty much where we're at. So what, what's the bottom line for you guys? What would you suggest the council do in this situation?
We feel it's in the best interest of the city long-term to go 100% ductile iron.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for being candid. Appreciate that. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilwoman Blair.
I'm awake. Hey, I got to tell you, wearing these masks suck the living oxygen out of my stream and I got to go back and nap so I can get some more oxygen. Hey, but listen, I, I think one of the things that hasn't been touched upon and, and we're very unique in the fact, and Craig, you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, Prescott's always been in a very unique situation with our water infrastructure, which means there's a lot of zones within the city of Prescott that have varying pressures and they alternate from time to time because of when the water's moving from our facility in Chino Valley or being pumped from tank to tank, that from time to time, those pressures in those pipes change. And when that happens, it puts a vibration as well as more pressure on PVC. Would I be correct in making that statement?
Our pressures change by the second in this system.
Okay. So my question becomes is when we know that to be true, then there should not be a doubt in our mind what we should use for a product out there. Because again, the vibration, the earth moving, the rocks that we have in our soil here, our granite, it doesn't matter what it is, eventually we're going to have to replace those because of the undue stress by the different pressures that are inside those pipes from day to day. So I would agree that, that I think that standard of ductile iron will just pushed on to the developments that we require to do them, which is ultimately pushed on to the property owner, which is ultimately the person that's paying for it.
All right. Any other council comments or questions?
I think we have a clear consensus here.
Yeah, I would say I agree, Councilman Good. We have a pretty clear consensus regarding the use of ductile iron in the city. And so Craig, I think, you know, that's probably what we're looking for is some action on a voting session in the future. Michael, do you have some thoughts in that regard?
This is certainly a policy decision that I'm sure Craig can prepare the information and we can bring it back to you guys probably sometime in January, but no later than February.
Yep. Very good. Sarah, public comment out there?
I do have one public comment. Mike, I'm unmuting you. Michael Fan, you can go ahead and speak.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, glad to join this riveting conversation for this afternoon. I'm sure you're all enjoying this. Obviously, there's been a debate that's been going on a while. I respect the opinions of the Public Works Department. We agree on many, many things. This, this one, we're probably a little on each side of the gray area. Neither one is black and neither one is white. I would say that the experience at the city of Prescott is not exactly consistent with nationwide results of PVC pipe, ductile iron pipe, cast iron pipe, high-density polyethylene pipe. There, there are many, many pipe manufacturers and types of pipe out there. Nationwide, I've, I've got some statistics to share. There was one study that's done that, that surveyed over 300 water systems throughout the United States. And, and in 2008, this was done in 2018. In 2018, there was 14 breaks per 100 miles. So breaks are common. As far as nationwide, PVC pipe had the lowest overall failure rate, rate, which is not consistent with the city of Prescott. I, I understand and respect that. Construction-related failures were equal between ductile iron pipe and PVC pipe. And if this council wants me to forward that study so they can see it themselves, I can certainly do that. It's interesting. I guess my point would be there's really not one size that fits all, so to speak. We pay professional engineers to engineer various projects. And in the case of, if we're going to narrow this to ductile iron pipe versus PVC pipe, PVC pipe lasts over 100 years. The comment that PVC pipe only lasts 20 years is just, is just not accurate. We've all heard the, I've got on my desk right now a little plastic water bottle and we've all heard that those plastic water bottles will sit in our landfills for 1,000 years. That's, that's because vinyl, polyvinyl chloride lasts a long, long time. The difference is installation. That list that Eric and Craig brought up had about eight items on it. Seven out of those eight items had to do with how pipe is installed. And the failures that the city has experienced is overwhelmingly due to poor installation practices. And so what's your experience? I, I would say that what you're experiencing on these removal and replacement projects does not have to do with PVC pipe. It has to do with the inferior installation of PVC pipe. So when you have a contractor that has a total quality management program together that's going to ensure there is sand under, around and over that pipe, he's not going to overstress the joint, he's not going to over bend the joint, he's not going to lay it on a piece of rock, that PVC pipe will last longer, much longer than a ductile iron pipe that's, that is susceptible to corrosion. So, so my point would be, let me share something. I've been doing this literally all of my life. We have replaced ductile iron pipe in the city of Prescott with non-ductile iron pipe. We have replaced lots of galvanized steel pipe throughout the state of Arizona with high-density polyethylene pipe, both for the federal highway administration and the Arizona Department of Transportation, again, due to corrosion issues. HDPE pipe and PVC pipe lasts longer. That's, that's just a fact. But the key is installing it properly. Today, the city of Prescott has a very good program that says if you're going to install PVC, we want to, we want to watch every stick going in the ground. I think it's unfair to a contractor like us that we make sure we're doing that ourselves already, but I can certainly put myself in the city of Prescott's position and say, we need to ensure it's properly installed. So I'll close by saying in, in 50 or 60 or 70 years, when we're all long gone, are we going to have a Public Works Department that says, gee, I wish they would have been putting PVC back in the ground back then because that's what's lasting 70 years versus a bunch of ductile iron pipe that has corroded and they're replacing it due to corrosion issues, not installation issues? So thank you for giving, allowing me to give the other side and have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Sarah, are there any other public comments?
I do not have any other public comments, Mayor.
All right. So I don't think there's anything else on this item that I'm aware of. So again, thanks Craig and Eric for the presentation and I think we're ready to go on to item 3B, please.
Presentation by Dibble Engineering and Airport Staff on the 3R 21L runway extension planning study.
You, do you want me, this is Charlie McDermott. Do you want me to share my screen or how do you want to?
Yes, please share your screen if you have the presentation, sir.
That was just a quick preview.
That was quick. Did you catch all that?
So, good afternoon, members of council and mayor. We have an equally exciting presentation, I hope. This one is on the runway extension planning study that we're wrapping up. I'd like to introduce Charlie McDermott and also Jenny Watts of Dibble, who have been partners on this study, which has been in, in progress here for several months now. And go ahead, Charlie, and I'll be jumping in as needed. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Robin. Just want to ask everybody to mute, if you're not speaking, mute during the presentation, please.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Robin and the mayor. Again, my name is Charlie McDermott. I'm the Planning Manager for Dibble Engineering. And Jenny Watts is here with me today also. She's our Senior Aviation Planner and the primary author of, of the study. The study, if you recall, we started last, late December, early January last year and really the object, the objective And really, the object, the objective of the study was to demonstrate that a runway extension was needed and what was the, the best way to do that. That would allow the, the airport to move into the environmental phase. So that's the overarching need for the, for the study itself. Today, we're going to talk about some specific focus areas that are contained within the study. Most importantly, some of the operational challenges that the airline faces and how are we going to achieve a runway extension that can accommodate that? So Jenny and I are going to kind of tag team this. And the first one up is the operational challenges, which Jenny is going to speak to today.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so I'm sure as many of you are aware, the commercial, the existing commercial service provider at Prescott, United Express, which is operated by SkyWest Airlines, has had tremendous amount of success in the short amount of time that they have been operating there. They started operations in August of 2018, taking over from, from a previous carrier. And again, their passenger employments have really far exceeded, I think, the expectations of, of the airline and of the airport itself. And so really, that's great news for Prescott and for the airport. What that shows really is that the demand for commercial air service in Prescott and the surrounding areas is there. However, and they've done a great job with that, again, as I mentioned. But the doesn't, there are some challenges that the airline has faced at Prescott, regardless of, of the amount of, of demand and, and, you know, positive feedback that they've, they've been seeing. And so the study, really the first part of the study was looking at what are these challenges that the airline has been facing? And so specifically, at Prescott, the airline has had to reduce its capacity on, on some of its flights at certain times of the year and, and certain days when they're having their flights to Denver or to Los Angeles. And really, it's a combination for the airline of, of two things. One, it's, it's the existing length of runway, three right, two, one left, in combination with some environmental and operational factors. Those really include, again, specific to Prescott and the airport, the density altitude on certain days that will affect the airline's operational capabilities. Same thing with the winds. There are certain times of the day or times of the year where, where the, the wind is going to affect the, the operational capabilities of the aircraft that the airline is using. And then they also have to take in consideration with the runway's existing length and its configuration. You know, there are federal operational procedures that apply to air transport carriers, most specifically with their one-engine-in-operative procedures. And that really kind of dictates where that aircraft can take off on the runway. And so these things at Prescott have led to kind of having the airline having to reduce their, their operational weight or their takeoff weight. When that happens in the industry, you know, an aircraft can really reduce its weight several ways. It can either, you know, remove fuel or it can remove cargo and baggage, or if it's an airline, you know, passengers. And at particular times of the year, you know, United Express and SkyWest have had to do this at Prescott. Next slide, please, Charlie. And so when this happens, when an airline has to, you know, remove passengers or reduce the weight for their aircraft, in the industry, it's called bumping or it gets classified as a denied boarding. And really, there are two primary reasons that this, this can occur. The most common really reason is that the airline has oversold the available seats. This is a really common practice. All airlines do this, you know, and when that happens, they have to compensate and, you know, reshuffle and, and ask for volunteers, you know, to, to get rid of those extra seats that they oversold. But the other reason is for the, the factors that I just spoke about. So the airline or the aircraft at that time from, you know, whatever airport they're taking off at, has to reduce its weight in order to safely depart that runway because of some kind of outside factor. It could be the temperature, it could be the wind, it's those operational, you know, parameters that the airline has to meet. And so although Prescott has seen a lot of passengers, again, there are times when they have to ask passengers to voluntarily give up their seat because the aircraft, for whatever the conditions are at the time, cannot meet that operational takeoff weight. Next slide.
Jenny, one, one thing I want to point out also is we do understand that historically, there has never been an involuntary denied boarding. In other words, no one has been forced to, to leave without being compensated. So that's, that's our understanding that there has never been historically an involuntary one, so.
Right. Right. So this is the data that we received from SkyWest. They've, they've kept track of this. So you'll see from that time period of when they started there, August of 2018 through December of 2019, they had a total of 135 denied boardings, as they're, as they're termed, of which 120 of those were revenue-paying passengers. Those are highlighted on the table there in yellow, you'll see. And then another procedure that they've kind of had to implement at Prescott specifically is this concept of blocking seats for purchase. This is kind of a proactive measure on behalf of the airline. So essentially, what they're doing is, is they're blocking these seats from being purchased in, in their system, just so they can avoid the inevitable having to, you know, ask someone to voluntarily give up their seat once they're already at the airport. So those are highlighted in red on the table. And you'll notice that that is, they've, they've put this measure into place during the higher temperature summer months, when, you know, the density altitude is going to have an effect on that operational weight of the aircraft. So again, I really want to emphasize in the study that, so what's happening, you know, again, been successful with passengers, but because of some of these environmental constraints and the current length of the runway, the airline has had to have these denied boardings. And it's not because the airline is overselling these seats. It's because of these environmental factors and the length of the runway. Next slide. And what that really then translates to, you know, there, there's two things. There's the monetary component of that. So of the data that we just showed on the previous table, that equated to about 650 unsold seats. So that's, that's revenue that the, the airline has missed out on for these particular routes. And then, which equated to about $84,000 and change, based on a recent average fare there at Prescott. But that also doesn't take into consideration some of the additional expenses that they have to incur. That would be future flight vouchers. Sometimes it means having to compensate for an overnight hotel stay or transportation to another airport. So that's kind of the, the monetary effect of, of having to, you know, request that some of these passengers not fly on these flights.
And Jenny, Jenny, I'd like to go ahead and jump in for the non-monetary impact, if I may.
Sure.
Okay. So one of the things we have to take into consideration is while people are sometimes extremely happy to get future flight benefits of a, a thousand dollars for being compensated for voluntarily moving off the flight and into another flight, there is, of course, that perception that we don't want to have, which is reliability concerns. So this is another consideration is when people are making flight decisions, they want to go to the airport and know that their plane is going to depart. But we have had some pretty happy people that got pretty well compensated because the way the voluntary compensation works is they keep elevating the amount until they get the voluntary passenger. And that can go up pretty high. Thanks, Jenny.
No, thank you. Yeah. So Robyn's exactly right. So you have, so in the last couple of years, you know, the, the airport and the airline have worked really hard to reestablish this reputation. And, and they've done so successfully. You know, they've, they've demonstrated that they are able to be more reliable and, and do it in a more customer service friendly manner than the previous service provider. And I really think that's attributed to their success and people wanting to fly from Prescott. So sure. So, but over time, if this were to keep occurring, you can see where that might compound and, and that might start to enter people's minds again, like, well, maybe if I don't want to go to Prescott because maybe I'm not going to get on the plane. So that's really the issue that the airline has been wrestling with, given the current, you know, length of the runway and then, you know, some of those environmental factors. Their, their goal really is to, you know, maximize the capacity on each flight. And so Charlie's going to actually go into how their aircraft that they're using comes into play and how that was important in the study.
So in the study, we acknowledge that the current critical aircraft at the airport is the CRJ 200. That is an aircraft that is considered in the master plan that was recently completed back in 2019. But this, our study acknowledges that that is true, that today, your critical aircraft is the CRJ 200. And that's a, that's configured as a 50-seat aircraft, as we know, and, and that contributes to some of the, the constraints that the airline continues to experience because of that aircraft. But we also know that in the future, the airline is going to exchange that equipment to either one of the following aircraft or a combination of the following aircraft, the CRJ 700, 900, or the Embraer 170 or 175. We know from our discussions with the airline that these are the likely aircraft that in the near future will be operating routinely at Prescott. And this is important because we need to take into consideration not only the existing current critical aircraft, but what is anticipated in the future. So when the FAA makes an investment in the infrastructure of Prescott, it's done, it's done in a meaningful way that we're taking into consideration what is likely to operate at the airport. And that's important because the outcomes are different depending on the, the aircraft. So, so the future critical aircraft were also considered in the, in the master plan that was recently completed. And the FAA is in agreement with us that this study considered the future critical aircraft as well as the existing. So when we look at the runway length calculation, FAA requires us to use their methodology to determine what the runway length is for not only the existing critical aircraft, but those future critical aircraft. So this, this table represents the runway length that is needed for the future critical aircraft at the airport. And when you look at the column on the left, when we use the manufacturer's data for each of those future critical aircrafts, we come up with a different length, which is, which is kind of intuitive that each, each aircraft is unique in its performance. And so therefore, it requires a different runway length. So when we look at the runway lengths based on the manufacturer's data for the future critical aircraft, it ranges from 8,500 feet to 10,500 feet of runway that is needed for those aircraft. But FAA also recognizes that no runway is, is completely flat. In other words, each end, each, each runway end is always going to be at a different elevation routinely throughout the country. So it's recognized that you have to account for that difference in elevation. So when we, through our process of doing preliminary engineering associated with an extended runway, we have established what that future runway end elevation is going to be for each of these lengths. And we make that adjustment in the runway length to accommodate that difference in elevation. So when we do that, we arrive at new numbers, greater lengths for the future critical aircraft, ranging from 9,210 feet up to 11,330 feet for the range of those future critical aircraft that we know are going to operate at the airport. And that's important because when we compare that analysis to what was in the airport master plan, which did not take into account a different delta, in other words, a different elevation change for an extended runway, they arrived at 10,000 feet. But for a master plan, that's completely appropriate. We've been doing master plans for decades and we would do the same exact thing. So the methodology that the master plan used was appropriate and correct, but they arrived at 10,000 feet historically. And interestingly, the 2009 airport master plan arrived at a length of 10,570 feet. So you know that this, this is not a new issue, that the runway is, is deficient in length. It has been captured in, in the last two master plans. So that's the box on the left. The one in the center is, is our analysis using FAA methodology. But interestingly, we also asked the airlines to tell us from their perspective and from the way they operate their aircraft, what is the future, or what's the, the optimum runway length based on their equipment and the environmental factors at Prescott? What would, what length would they need? So when we looked at their analysis, they arrived at 10,500 feet to 11,000 feet, where the range of aircraft anticipated to operate at Prescott. So we, we look at all three of these methodologies, recognizing that we're using the future critical aircraft, we're recommending that the runway length be 11,000 feet to accommodate what is demonstrated by the airlines as the length that they need to optimize the performance of the aircraft that they anticipate at, at Prescott. So that would be the recommended runway length. It's important because you got to remember, as Jenny had mentioned, we're trying to maximize that flight capacity. We, we want to get as many passengers on those aircraft as possible. And we want to do that because that allows the airline to generate more revenue per passenger, which in turn allows them to have higher profitable routes to and from Prescott. But what that, that ultimately means is that the airline is going to want to stay at Prescott and develop their service and provide better transportation services to the community. So there's a, an underlying objective there of providing the best services and hopefully additional routes that could also be profitable for, for Prescott. So now we're going to look at, so we know the aircraft, we know the length, we know the goal. So how are we going to achieve that? We're going to achieve that by developing, we developed three different runway extension alternatives. Each one of the runway extension alternatives extends runway two, two, one left end. And the first alternative, we extend both taxiway Charlie and taxiway Delta. Alternative number two, we just extend taxiway Charlie. And alternative three, we just extend taxiway Delta. And graphically, it looks like this. So this is the first alternative. You can see the runway extension of two, one left. And parallel taxiway Charlie is on top and taxiway Delta is on the bottom. This gives all of the users direct and unconstrained access to the extended runway end, both from the passenger terminal side on the top and Emory Riddle and the Forest Service and other GA users on the bottom through taxiway Delta.
And Charlie, may I jump in for a moment?
Absolutely.
Okay. For some of the council members, we've had discussions about what we refer to as the W. You can see that depicted below the yellow extension. That's the additional area that is involved in another development that's being proposed, which is AED. And, and we just wanted you to see as we extend the runway, you could see taxiway Delta is the taxiway that's along the bottom. And that would increase accessibility to that parcel as well as other areas at that end of the airport. Okay?
So the, the graphic that you see in front of you, this, this shows all of the environmental resources that potentially would be impacted. In other words, the, the wash to the northeast shows the existing airport property, the zoning, or I'm sorry, the land use around the airport and the land acquisition needs to accommodate an extended runway. So each of the alternatives uses this graphic as a background. So we look at alternative number two. Again, that extends runway two and left and taxiway Charlie on the top, which in turn gives the airline direct access to the new extended runway end and presents some challenges for the Forest Service and Emory Riddle to cross over an active runway to proceed down taxiway Charlie to get to the end of the new runway end.
Charlie, could you show up with the cursor, please? Run how exactly Amber Riddle would come out of their operation and then down taxiway Delta.
Yep. So this is Emory Riddle, their, their campus.
Right. And North Air is directly adjacent?
Yep. Yep, and they would proceed down taxiway Delta. And they would have to cross over the active runway and then down taxiway Charlie down to the end, uh, for takeoff. Uh, and, uh, upon landing, they would have to do the, uh, just the reverse. So the same thing with the Forest Service, they're located over here. They would have to proceed down, cross over and continue down taxiway Charlie to the end, uh, for, uh, for takeoff and, and the reverse, uh, upon landing if they, if they didn't, uh, get back to taxiway.
Now, according to the flight training institutions, it is their preference to use full-length runway. So some might ask, well, gee, why don't they just take off midfield? Because they have the same seven thousand two hundred, you know, feet that we have currently right now, seven thousand six hundred and nineteen feet. The concern with that obviously is that if you're in training operations, you'll take all the runway you can get. So it would be the intent of the flight schools to use full-length runway. That's why the crossings would be required. Um, we have two hundred and thirty-five thousand operations a year here and ninety-eight percent of them are training traffic. Um, so as a result, that would mean that quite a few of those operations would be crossing to utilize full length of that runway.
So when we look at alternative number three, same, uh, same runway extension footprint. Uh, but again, we extend taxiway Delta, uh, for access to the end of the extended runway. But, uh, as we mentioned, that's going to create a challenge for the airline because they're going to taxiway down tax, they're going to taxi down taxiway Charlie and have to cross an active runway to proceed down an extended taxiway Delta to get to the end of the new, uh, extended runway, both on takeoff and, um, potentially on landing. So that, um, that presents some challenges and Jenny's going to talk about when we evaluated the alternatives, what did we take into consideration and, uh, which alternative, uh, we arrived at to be the, the recommended or the preferred alternative, uh, coming out of this study. So when we look at all of the alternative considerations, there, there's a lot of things to consider, a- as you might imagine on a project of this magnitude and we, and because of the time constraints, we don't have the ability today to talk about each one of these, uh, all of which are important. One in specific, particular, we want to speak about is the air traffic control tower. Uh, we did look at, uh, FAA has a tool or analysis tool that, uh, is available to, uh, do a line of sight analysis for, uh, air traffic control towers. So we did that for, for, uh, this project. Uh, but we also looked at it from two perspectives or two runway lengths. The first one being, uh, the ten thousand five hundred foot, uh, because again, remember back, the airline said they need ten thousand five to eleven thousand feet. So we looked at both of those, uh, looked at ten thousand five foot extension and eleven thousand, uh, foot runway with the existing tower location. Uh, and we determined that, that the actual location of the tower isn't necessarily problematic, but certainly the line of sight is, uh, because of the, um, new runway end elevations that we've established, uh, does create, uh, a challenge or, or it actually, the way the analysis works, either, it's either passing criteria or failing criteria. Uh, we do fail on both of those locations from a vertical perspective, not necessarily a horizontal, uh, location perspective. So it does create a challenge for the project in terms of the tower, which I don't believe is, uh, new information for, uh, anyone. Uh, everyone is, is known that the tower has some challenges with its existing, uh, age of the tower and the height of it has presented, uh, itself numerous times. And I know there's some historical studies, uh, that we have included in, in our study in the appendices for reference, uh, that document this, this challenge. One thing that's going to come out of this study is, is the benefit of, let me, let me rephrase that. The benefit of this study is that we have now established the runway length that is desirable. And we've also established the runway end elevation that is desirable. So with that information, the FAA can now make a, a better decision about what is, what exactly is the length that you need and what is that elevation going to be? So they can make their own determination as to whether or not that tower needs to be replaced. And if so, what the timing of that replacement would be. So that, that information is, is contained in our study to benefit the FAA.
And Charlie, before we leave alternative considerations, could you point out the approach end of three right? And we are, we did evaluate obstructions at that end over there. So we did an extensive evaluation, um, in the study. You want to speak to that, Charlie, or you want me to?
Uh, you, uh, you can.
Okay, so we're real concerned about the fact that, um, all of this analysis is based on the fast, fact that no additional obstructions appear in the area where Charlie had just circled at the, um, map west end. Um, and of course, if there are any obstructions that are built or evolve like a tree growing, we do have to be very mindful of that because that can affect the entire outcome of the analysis. The amount of runway needed is presumes no higher than the obstruction height that currently exists at that end at this time. Correct, Charlie?
That's correct, yes. And be- because of the obstacles that are on that end, um, you know, you as, uh, as the airport sponsor, uh, it's going to be really important in the future to make sure that, that no additional obstacles are created. So in other words, if there are additional, um, uh, features along eighty-nine or vegetation that grows up, it's going to be important to maintain that and, and keep, uh, those obstacles as, as clear as possible from, uh, being problematic, uh, in the future. And it, you know, you know, Prescott is not alone. I, I worked at airports all across the country. Every airport has, has obstacle issues, uh, around their airport. So it's just, it's something that you got to be mindful of as an airport owner, uh, to try to keep them, uh, mitigated to the extent practical.
Thank you.
Yep. So now Jenny's going to talk about how we evaluated the alternatives and discuss how we arrived at our preferred.
Great. So as, uh, you just saw on the, the couple of previous slides, there were numerous considerations to take into effect, um, that affected each and every one of, you know, the alternatives. And so we needed a way to, um, evaluate all of those, um, considerations, um, in order to come up with like the preferred alternative. Um, so what we ended up doing was when we started looking at some of those factors and issues, they kind of fit into different categories. And we, we created, um, kind of three categories where the considerations typically kind of fell for each alternative. Um, so we came up with, um, a financial feasibility, operational performance, and then some other considerations. Um, that included some of the environmental stuff, um, potential for economic development, um, master plan goals, that kind of a thing. And then, um, once we kind of came up with these overarching categories of where we wanted to evaluate the, uh, alternatives, um, we came up with very specific criteria within those categories. And so as you can see here in the table, um, we met with, you know, this, this was developed with the input from the airport, um, and also from the Aviation Advisory Board and some of the other major stakeholders, um, there at the airport. Um, and what we found though, once we came up with the category and then the criteria, was that some of them, um, kind of outweighed, um, the others as far as important, what was important to the airport and the stakeholders. And so in order to kind of make sure some of those were captured, um, over others, we, we, uh, developed like a weighted system. So you can see there, um, that the criteria were given a weight within the category, um, out of a hundred. And then the categories themselves were also weighted. So of importance, you know, to the group, um, was mainly the operational performance. And that's where the safety and kind of compatibility, um, and efficiency issues come into play. So to them, to the, to the, to the airport and to the users, you know, operational performance, um, was slightly more important than the financial, um, and other considerations. But after we had established, um, these, we took that, um, okay, Charlie, next slide. And then we developed a, a, a rating scale, basically. So we had a scale of one through four and you can see there, um, what the one through four, um, represented. Now unfortunately, um, don't have time in this presentation to get into, um, you know, specific definitions of each of those. But within the report, we do have a table that will give you, uh, describes what the one through four rankings mean. And we also have, um, you know, a table that compares each of these, um, criteria to one another. And so we really did like a pretty good in-depth analysis. And again, this is just the outcome of that analysis. So with the input from the airport and from the stakeholders, this is the ranking system that we've assigned to each of these criteria. And essentially then what happens, um, when you apply the weighted values from the criteria and then the overall category, um, the overall weighted score, this is how that ranking, um, ended up. So you can see that alternative one, uh, which is the extension of both Charlie and Delta taxiways, um, that ended up ranking the highest, um, uh, followed by alternative three, which is taxiway Delta. But, um, therefore, you know, based on the ranking and, and the other input we've received, at this point, we recommended that alternative one, uh, is the preferred alternative.
Great, thank you. So when we look at the overall project, uh, we have developed the costs associated with them. And I just want to point out, make sure that folks realize this is in twenty twenty dollars. So as we move forward in time, uh, costs will, will change. But not surprisingly, alternative number one, uh, comes in at, at sixty-four million dollars, the local share being about one point six million. A significant project, very expensive. Uh, you can see with alternative two and alternative three, pretty much, pretty much the same, but, uh, fifty-four million. Um, the local share being about one point three, uh, million for each one of those. So, you know, it's, it's, it's very clear, those, those taxiways are very expensive. And we know that because there's a significant amount of fill associated with, uh, specifically, uh, taxiway Delta, uh, to bring them up to grade. Um, so very expensive project, um, alternative number one being the most expensive. But as Jenny had mentioned, uh, really shakes out as the best alternative to satisfy the operational needs of not just the airline, but, uh, Emory Riddle and certainly the Forest Service. So, uh, a lot of competing priorities, um, but certainly alternative number one, uh, best meets all of the users' needs, but, uh, not surprisingly has the, the highest price tag. So that's something that we need to be mindful of, uh, as we go forward. Some of the bigger key challenges that we've identified in the, in the study, uh, the runway length, getting buy-in on that, uh, with FAA is going to be very important. Um, one other, uh, very important key challenges, count, challenge is going to be the control tower. We know that, that is an issue that FAA is going to have to wrestle with to determine if it's going to be replaced and when it's going to be replaced. But i- in addition, but the funding strategy is going to be very important for, uh, you as the airport sponsor to think about, uh, in the very near future in terms of, uh, you know, the grants that, that FAA will issue and the timing and, and if there are other grant opportunities or more surplus or stimulus funds. So there's going to be a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of, uh, thought that needs to be put into that funding strategy. When we look at the schedule, uh, best case scenario, we believe it could be completed within a, a five, approximately a five-year period. Uh, certainly we're in phase one right now during the planning aspect of it. Uh, assuming there are no gaps in the, in the program schedule, we think it should be able to be, uh, open and ready for business in the two thousand twenty-four slash twenty-five timeframe. Um, but again, that's, uh, that's a best case scenario. And it's going to take a lot of, um, dedication, uh, by not only the city, but the FAA to, uh, to keep a project of this size, uh, on, on schedule and, uh, but it is achievable, it's certainly, uh, certainly doable. Um, it's just, we have to, uh, make sure, uh, everything is in alignment with, uh, the FAA in terms of, uh, this, this study and the next steps. As I mentioned at the beginning, uh, this study is, is what FAA needs to, uh, determine that there is a need for the project, okay? FAA, in FAA's world, they talk about project need, okay? We believe we've demonstrated in this study that there is a need for this project now, okay? In other words, in, in other, uh, in other words, not, uh, far off into the future from a planning, master plan perspective. But we've demonstrated that there is a need for the project today. And that this project will satisfy or, or maximize the ability of the airline to operate successfully and grow in the future, right? Another important aspect of the study is it, it identifies that the elements contained within this project are eligible for FAA funding. So when FAA sees a study like this, you need to tell them that what you're proposing is eligible. Because there could be pieces and parts, parts and pieces that may not be eligible. But overall, uh, the elements included in this particular project, uh, all meet the eligibility requirements for FAA. So this, this is an FAA eligible project. And it does meet, uh, the needs of the users and it is needed today. So next step, uh, receive FAA concurrence on this study and then, uh, immediately proceed into the environmental phase. While we will look at the, uh, potential environmental impacts associated with project, which this study could, contains a, a, a good environmental baseline for that process to begin with. Um, and then keep the project, uh, and the process moving as quickly as possible. So with that, we, I'd just like to thank, uh, the mayor and the, and the council for the opportunity to, uh, be participate in a study, uh, in this study and thank Robin for her confidence in our, in our team and we'll take any questions.
Well, thank you, Charlie. It's a great presentation. It's good to have this box checked and to know, uh, what we're up against, if you will. And it's exciting to think that possibly in five years or so, uh, we could see this be a reality. So thanks for all your work. Thank you, Robin. Uh, let's go to council. Let's start with our, uh, Airport Advisory Liaison Councilman Sishka.
Thanks, Mayor. And, uh, Robin, this is going to be awesome when it finally happens.
Yes.
It's, uh, it's, it's really unfortunate that it's going to be five years, but if that's what it's got to be, that's what it's got to be. Uh, until then, do you really think, do you think that we'll get those, uh, seventy-seat jets in before then?
Yes, actually, we, we do have a letter that we received from Sky West Airlines that was used to inform the study. And they informed us that within three to five years, uh, it, they do believe they're evolving out of the CRJ two hundreds and into the seven hundreds and the nine hundreds or the one seventy, one seventy-five series. So we're looking at going to, um, those larger aircraft platforms, uh, fairly soon.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of alternate one. Because, you know, I would hate to basically inconvenience the airlines or basically inconvenience Amber Riddle or the Forest Service. So, uh, you know, uh, trying to satisfy both of those, I think is in our best interest.
I agree. We just, uh, we just, uh, met with the FAA on Friday because we received our terminal area forecast. And we believe it did not represent the future, um, operations due to the Embry-Riddle growth. So we've given them additional information to update the terminal area forecast, which is developed at the Washington DC level. And so we think we'll get support for that because of the growth that we're going to see in the flight training here, not only Embry-Riddle, but the other flight schools.
Well, you have my total support, Robin. And, uh, Mayor, thank you.
Yep. All right, Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Um, I support the airport and Robin and her crew a hundred percent. The airport is a economic driver and it's a wonderful asset. We're so fortunate for a community in an area of our size to have such a wonderful, uh, airport. Uh, that being said, I support, uh, alternate plan number one. Clearly, it's the best choice. And if you, uh, look at the added expense, it will be well worth the investment. And especially if you, uh, stretch it out over fifty years, it, uh, it definitely is, uh, the best choice. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Blair.
I am here and thank you, everybody. Robin, once again, thank you. And Robin, I think if you'll remember, you and I stood there with that gentleman when we were getting ready to start our building of our airport terminal. He said the sooner, the better that this could come before them, we would be better served. I think you probably remember that conversation.
Yes, I do.
Yeah. And I think that conversation bodes well for our staff and the work that you've done out there. I think we need to keep this thing moving forward as hard as we can, uh, full court press, so to speak. Um, I believe we need to go with op, um, option number one without a doubt. I think two and three, we, we'd be behind the curve of doing something that would be that minimal. Uh, and it would jeopardize, in my opinion, safety of both incoming and outgoing on both C and D. Uh, and it would jeopardize, in my opinion, safety of both incoming and outgoing on both C and D. So number one is the best. I would have to say to Michael Lamar, I'm concerned about our negotiations with AED to be able to make sure that we take down this piece of property. Are are we moving in that direction, Mr. Manager?
Well, as you know, uh, Steve, the negotiations with AED have been long and arduous in many respects, but uh, yeah, the necessary land for uh airport buffer is part of the negotiation, and I, I think it's an essential part of the deal we strike with Jason Geese.
Are we doing last question, I suppose, for our study team, Robin? And and I've been here long enough to know that we've done environmental impacts on that area ad nauseam, at least as far as I'm concerned. Are we doing an accelerated environmental impact based upon the things that we know that have taken place out there in the future? Or in the past, I should say?
Actually, I don't believe we've done an environmental study that relates to that end of the airport. Um, there are three levels of uh basically analysis that can evolve out of uh an environmental review like this. The first one would be a categorical exclusion, which is it's such a nothing project, you don't have to, you know, you can just submit it and it'll be approved. That's, that's frankly not the case here. This is going to be a a more accelerated process. This will be called an environmental assessment. Generally, those last about a year. That's if you don't find an endangered something uh out there. Uh, when we, uh, thanks to the good work of Jenny and Charlie, they have done the preliminary analysis, see something jumping out at us. But when we did meet with the FAA, they said even the train trestles, being a cultural resource, could be something that we have to consider, even though you can see where people have lived underneath them and there's burn marks on them. Those could be something that we need to have for future study, you know, or something like that. Uh, we do hope, we hope it doesn't go into a full-blown environmental impact analysis or statement, and that could be years and years.
These are, these are the, uh, these are the kind of things that put our economy and a lot of things across this country in jeopardy. If they need, if they need me to count bunny rabbits, I'll be glad to raise my hand.
I get it. Yeah, we ran into one of those at Sky Harbor when I was there. It was a smoke layer that was found, and it set the project back three months and three hundred thousand dollars, just to evaluate the smoke layer um and then document it and then cover it back up. Um, so yeah.
I believe, I believe Scottsdale, when, when I put the shades in their cab at their terminal down there when they built the airport cab, I, I believe they ended up with one of those situations as well, an environmental question call from the public that was, I don't know whether it was criticizing a tortoise or a three-legged rabbit or what it was, but it sent them back as well.
Yeah. So the, you know, that's always a, a possibility that we have to consider is there may be an extended environmental study. Um, the good news is if the land acquisition does work out, it actually benefits us in two ways. The donation, um, it benefits us in the sense that um that donation, when received by the city and if the city then eventually donates it to the project, that's actually part of our match. So that one point six million dollars could actually be made up as part of that as a match, which is, which is good.
I'm glad you're bringing that up so everybody can fully understand that it's not hard cash. It is also, and a match with the land would make a big difference.
Mm-hmm. So that'll be really helpful. The other, the other advantage of that land acquisition at this, or committing to that, that donation of land, if it does come through, is that um you notice we put about a year in there for land acquisition. So it was first year planning, second year, as we're, you know, the environmental. Third year is land acquisition. If that's done in parallel with another step, or it's already handled, then we could, could potentially cut off a year. So now we're looking closer to the mayor's goal of three years, right, Mayor Mangrally?
That is correct.
So.
Full court press.
Yeah, we're going for it. We're going for it.
Yeah, it's not, not uncommon that uh land acquisition can, can uh happen concurrently. You know, sometimes you, you would start it right at the tail end of the environmental, but it, it, it could go in parallel with the design uh process if everything is falling into place. But I agree. I mean, land, land acquisition, they can go quickly or they can take on a life of their own, but uh it is something that you got to focus on.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Uh, Councilmember Blair?
It does, and I knew that there was some flexibility in there. I know this is uh, this five phases that I'm looking at on the screen is the long phase, as far as I'm concerned, and I'd like to see that shortened up two years. So full court press.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thank you, Charlie and Jenny, for all this information. I think for me, it kind of just cements um for the FF, uh FAA what we've known all along and what we need. So it's exciting to kind of see this finally move forward and um, I don't, I don't have any specific questions. I'm just excited and looking forward to next steps.
All right, Councilman Good?
Well, I too agree that the alternative one is by far the best uh option to pursue. Uh, the cost differential for the city is uh really minimal for the benefits that uh that would provide. Uh, clearly, as um Emory Riddle's flight training program continues to grow, um, I don't think anybody wants uh student pilots crossing the main runway. Um, and also with our slurry bombers, with the National, National Forest Service uh having to deal with wildfire wildfires, we don't want uh them crossing that main runway either. So it's clearly the best alternative with a minimal differential in cost. Um, but you're right, we need to uh uh try to move forward as rapidly as we can with this while we still have the um kind of positive evaluation of the FAA. Um, and clearly, that's uh impacting over a, a new presidential um term. And I think as long as we be uh pretty well down the road, I think we could probably anticipate that um we can complete that planning, funding, and construction um without uh too much uh obstruction, so to speak. So I, I think uh I agree, we, we should uh pursue um alternate one and try to get as far down the road as possible um with the planning and the commitment to uh funding as, as possible. So um, I support that as well.
Yeah, very good. Go ahead, Charlie.
Mayor, if I could just make a comment about that, you know, and that's why we went to the extent that we did evaluate in the alternatives because, you know, you could just imagine FAA looking at it and thinking, well, where can we cut costs on this project? Well, first thing is get rid of one of the parallel taxiways. So that's why, you know, Jenny went to the extent that she did to really evaluate it in detail and to report forth what those operational challenges are to support our case that, yeah, we need both of them, actually. You can't, you can't save some money by just doing one, because it's too, too big of an impact operationally.
But I think it's important to note, um, what you're saying, obviously, Charlie, is is accurate. Um, it's important to note that the FAA uh will make its own decision on which alternative it wants. And frankly, the sequencing of the funding, and they may give, as they did with the Taxiway Charlie project, part upfront and then part the next year. It could be a multiple, multiple-part project. They may do the main runway in a parallel first and then put the second taxiway, you know, the second parallel taxiway on some sort of track for another year later. I mean, really, there's, there's no guarantee on what they're going to do. So this is so important that we continue to nurture and preserve our relationship with the Major Federal, you know, the, with the FAA. Um, and that's why we're trying to do everything, um, obviously, in, in the way that they have recommended that we do. This planning study was actually an additional recommendation, and they really appreciate the fact we did this. Um, just for your information, portion of the study was already sent to the FAA. That's the portion that has to do with the actual FAA methodology. Um, they don't have to accept the airline's methodology, um, and they don't have to accept our matrix that we created. These are all, in my opinion, additional factors that they can use to make a decision to favor perhaps both parallel taxiways along with the runway, but there's no guarantee. It is still considered competitive. They don't have enough money to fund every project in the country. And I think one of the biggest complicating factors is truly the air traffic control tower. There, um, in the last round of supplemental, there were fourteen applications for air traffic control towers across the country, and none were funded. So there are, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
And there is the possibility of a virtual tower. Uh, that is something that could be considered. There are, I have Jared Bass here with Dibble. You have some information on that, Jared?
Sure.
This is Jared Bass with Dibble Corp. here in my office.
Yeah, so right now, actually, Dibble Engineering is working with the Northern Colorado Regional Airport myself, actually. Um, we're working with them right now. We're, we're, we're doing the Prescott Terminal Phase Two up there. Uh, we're giving, we're working on a thirty thousand square foot terminal for them themselves, because they are, they too are also in the same phase as what Prescott was a couple of years ago when airlines started, is starting up there. Um, and, and one of the, they had was that commercial service did not want to operate at that airport because the air traffic was just too busy. And so because a tower costs twenty to twenty-six million, um, there's just no way that they were going to fund that at an airport um like that. And so um the option came in uh doing a virtual tower. They teamed with the state agency like ADOT. And they paid, and the, the state agency helped invest and and program and fund the infrastructure, and then the two cities and the airport itself uh kind of took on the rest. So they are one of the first and foremost airports. It's operational right now. Um, Prescott Airport staff has been actually invited up to come see it and take a look at it and experience it. It's a, it's a series of array cameras throughout the airport. And um instead of having a twenty-six million dollar tower that operated its airspace, it's only a two point five million dollar uh project. And the other benefit too is, is that that location can now not only operate that one airport, but it can also operate multiple airports at the same site. And so the FAA is behind it. The FAA has already um have, they have a program in place to train tower operators. And so all the parts and pieces are in place. It's all getting certified, safety, you name it. And um, and they're expecting to have commercial services start up this year. So it's something that we've brought to Prescott, it's something that we've brought to ADOT. Uh, we, we've worked with a few other airports in the state of Arizona. They're looking forward to that opportunity as well.
Thank you, Jared. So we're trying to anticipate every possible concern that could come up and do what we can to mitigate it.
Very good. Well, I think we have strong consensus here on alternative one. Uh, and I don't think there's any real big surprises here for, for us. Uh, but it just underscores uh really what we'd probably already been thinking in terms of runway length and the, the taxiways, et cetera, as, as well as the tower. So thank you for that and for validating uh what we would like to see as we move forward and helping us with FAA funding. I also think it really stresses the need to ensure that we get a deal done with uh AED. Uh, because this is important for the viability of our airport moving forward. Uh, and it really is a large part of this whole deal that we're talking about in terms of a runway extension. So I think uh, you know, we need to keep that in mind as we continue to move forward with that annexation. Is there any public comment out there, Sarah?
No, Mayor, I don't have anything.
Anything else from staff or council? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Uh, we'll be back at three o'clock for a voting session. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.